Please invocation as we stand with Parker giving the pledge of allegiance, please.
Bow our heads. Father, thank you for allowing us to be here tonight to make critical decisions for the citizens of Pascagoula. We love this city. We would like to ask you to be in our minds and be in our hearts to do what's right. In Jesus' mighty name we pray, amen.
Please join me in the pledge.
Pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Ready. So now we begin the project workshop. It starts off with Frank Corrigan, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor and Council, so what you are looking for tonight, as you know, we've got about two and a half million dollars of proceeds from the gas sale that Ms. Turner is going to be talking to you about how to spend those to benefit the city. And then after she does her presentation and y'all do your tabulations as far as ranking those projects as far as priorities, I'll come back to you and discuss paving with the funds that we've been given annually from the county. And we'll rank those on what you will like to see going the rest of this budget year. And then Ms. Turner will come back at the end and finalize the conversation about the priority setting with those infrastructure funds. So with that, I'll turn over to Ms. Turner.
Frank, please leave. There's been some discussion about exactly how much money is available. And I've heard a lot of numbers thrown around. And I guess what I'm hearing is...
Perhaps omission versus, you know, I've heard Katrina CBDG grant money, MDA money. Is the 2.5 million from the gas proceeds or what's left from the gas proceeds all that's available?
So the 2.5, there's, of course, you'll remember, you have $3 million on the gas sale. So what the city manager, Mr. Frederick, and Ms. Turner and I have been discussing is about 500,000 or so should be left for contingencies at this point. I'm still dealing with those issues around that self gas system. So you're looking at about 2.5 million dollars on these infrastructure projects that she discussed tonight. Other pots of money that you've gotten so far, the mayor's been instrumental in helping get the 1.5 for that off-ramp that goes into the Point Park, which we are meeting with, second meeting with Neil Schaefer this week to get that going. We also were able to receive the $2 million from the special session last year that goes towards Ingalls Avenue. That project's being drawn up now and drafted. And Jackie can speak to that if you'd like for too, along with another million from MDA to go with that with KCDBG funds. Also, the governor has texted the mayor and said that about 1.7 additional into that. So you're looking at close to $5 million so far committed to that Ingalls Avenue project from Market to the East Bank entrance gate. But that doesn't affect any of this discussion tonight. That's all ancillary stuff. Tonight's just focusing on that 2.5 million with the gas sale funds.
There was also a discussion when we were contemplating the sale of the gas system that some of those proceeds might have to be used to pay off some lingering, I can't remember if it's 2011 or which bond it was, but one of the older bonds. Did that ever transpire?
So all the monies that were acquired from the gas sale, that $3 million, all go back into infrastructure projects at some level. And there was nothing left over to pay back for bonds.
Okay, so we're under no obligation to make a payment based upon...
That's correct.
All right.
Because at one time, we were only talking about spending 800,000 and the rest of it's going to go against debt service. I mean, did somebody tell us we had to spend all 2.5 million?
A couple of meetings ago, if you remember, Butler Snow came in and told y'all that all the funds that we received from the gas sale had to be used for infrastructure projects in the city to accommodate that requirement. So what you see tonight is trying to make sure that those projects are done the way you want them and what timeline you want them and that they're done adequately and appropriately based on the funding that is available now.
Now, we also, just for clarity, this is, all we're talking about is the gas money.
That's correct. That's correct.
Because the 1.5 is for the off-ramp that we got. And then 2 million from the special session.
That's correct.
That goes to Ingalls. And the additional 1 million we got goes there. The 1.75 million goes there.
That's correct.
And the two additional ones that are coming up, he proposed, would be for that as well.
That's correct. And we also have some outstanding funding that we were notified about from Tylenz to help with Lighthouse Park renovations, about $400,000 or so there, along with the 200 and something thousand dollars that we got this year for the Point Park. So that's all ancillary type stuff as far as this discussion goes. This goes primarily to projects that Jackie and the council have made as priorities during your terms to see that they get done in the city, would be water, sewer, those kind of things.
Well, I don't mean to jump ahead on that. I'm just, just want to make sure that we're where we need to be on that Ingalls. Because we should, in my meetings up there back and forth, we should have, we should have about nearly...
Should be close to 6 million when it's all said and done.
Well, actually, it should be closer to 8 million, I think. If you got 1.75, 1.75, 1.75, which is what, what they told us. Let's just say that's what they say.
I'm going off what I know in hand. What I know in hand is about close to 6.
So we know we got about 6 million in hand. Okay. Now, would that get us where we need to be?
It will get us the road and the, are utilities taken care of? The question is going to be how much of the overhead utilities are going around with the balance? And they're still getting quotes from each of those entities to put that number right.
All right. So when they broke that down for me, the option, if we couldn't put it under, would be that we would bury the pipe to come back later to chase it through.
We can, we can at least do that. And what we'll be looking at is prioritizing, like crossings first, even if we can't get the lower ones. There's a series of priorities that will follow and that will, their final quotes come in balance with what the final proceed numbers balance.
Okay. So as we move forward, though, if we can't, if we can't bury it underground like we want, because I realize, I've learned a lot more about that. And it is a very expensive process. So, but our, our view of that should be, from this point forward, that if we can't bury them, we'll at least install the chases now so that a future council can. That would allow them to do it at a much reduced cost. Okay.
Frank, one other thing, just so, because I, this may have been said before and I just don't remember it. But the KCBDG grants and the MDA monies that the mayor has gone and gotten, those are funds that have to be dedicated for facilitating access to the East Bank? Is that...
That's correct. It's identified for that corridor.
Okay. Corridor would include Market Street, presumably?
Market to, from Market on Ingalls Avenue to the East Bank entrance.
Okay. But not on Market itself?
That's correct.
Okay.
I think that's what we talked about, that other, the other two would be from Market and start working towards Howie Night. That's ultimately what that would be. But that's the pie in the sky right now. We know we got this and that gets us where we need to be.
So with that, Jackie can take over.
Okay. So just, I want to kind of set the stage for what I hope to have happen this evening. I've got packets that I'm going to hand out to each of you in just a few minutes. It's going to be a little overwhelming, I think, when you see how many efforts we have sitting in line and shuffling. The later in the day it gets, I can't read papers, but then I can't see you if I leave them on. It's a lot of stuff that we have on this list that we want to take care of. Basically, this entire list was developed from outstanding efforts that we know we need to get to and we just need to find a way to fund it. We asked all of you to contribute via email things to make sure that we didn't overlook anything. So all of those emails were integrated into this. There's a number of ongoing efforts that I've been working on, some of them 10, 12 years. So this reflects, to the best of my ability, a full list of everything that we know that needs to happen. Now, when you get this list, I'm just going to show you what it looks like real quick. It's five pages of this and you'll see A, B, C, and D. What I'm going to ask, and it turns out there's 120 projects. So there's a lot to read through. I want you to, if you will, kind of scan through them, ask me any questions you have about what they are, so you can make sure you understand them. And then at the top, I've got a reminder here to circle 30 each, A, B, C, and D. So the way that this works best, when you get this much data, is pick the 30 that you think are the most important, go ahead and do As, pick the 30 you think are least important and go D, and then the last 60 split between B and C. And what's going to happen is as soon as y'all get finished with that, I'm going to sit here, I'm going to tally up all the data from everybody who votes, so that before you leave tonight, you're going to have a cumulative idea of what you, as a council, feel are the most important. That doesn't mean we have to follow them in that order, but it gives us all an understanding of where we collectively want to focus. And of course, then we'll balance that against available money. Now, the one thing that I do want to bring to your attention is the first three projects on this list are intentionally the three projects that we have brought to you before as the things that the staff feels are the most critical. They are the closest to being shovel-ready. None of them are fully shovel-ready, but they're close. And I'll give you the paperwork and we'll talk about the money at the end of it. Basically, the idea is this first round is figure out what efforts you guys want to focus on, and then we can start going from there and figure out how much money we have once that's done. So with that, I'll hand them out very shortly. So as you see, there's a number of pages there. So if you will, just kind of read through them. There's a number next to each one of them. So if you have a question about one, you can refer to which project number it is. And I'll be standing right here. As you're filling these out, if you have more questions, I'm happy to answer questions.
What is this other sheet?
That's the street thing that Frank will be following up with in between. So we're dealing with two separate pots of money here. This is strictly the two and a half million from the gas sale. Frank will be talking about the other list with county paving money. And so there's two different sets of questions we need to answer.
So the one that you just gave us, the first three are the priorities, Boxwood, Univista, and Briarwood?
Based on the staff's recommendation, yes. Of course, if all of you feel like it's different, we can move in a different direction. But that's what we'd like to recommend as the highest.
And can you, in 60 seconds or less, tell us or explain what the Boxwood drainage improvements are?
Sure. So it drains a lot of Northwood, Southwood, Eastwood, goes through Boxwood, which is kind of the tail off of that box of streets, and then goes south and then east out to the bayou at 22nd Street. We have at least one sinkhole out there that you could easily fit a car in. It's been failing, continually getting worse. And as we started tracing that pipe north and south from there, just about every joint is starting to show more sinkholes and more failures. We were hoping we could just do a point repair. That's not the case. We've got pavement. We've got yards that have been failing for years. And the only way to correct this, where we're not just going to be patching it every six months, is going to be go from, I think it's the corner of Driftwood and Boxwood, basically come across driveways, come through the yard where the large hole is, south where there's continuing failing joints all the way down and then out into 22nd Street. And one of the reasons that we're looking at the entire run is that it also does not have the capacity it needs to drain everything upstream of there. So when we do these projects, rather than putting a Band-Aid on them, if we put the right size pipe in the ground, we will be improving overall drainage citywide. So it's not just a localized one or two people, but several neighborhoods impacted.
Do you want us to put a circle even on the streets that we haven't seen personally or just the one that we know personally?
This list, what I'd like for you to do is do 30 As, 30 Bs, 30 Cs, and 30 Ds. And if it's something that you don't know about at all, probably it's going to be a low priority for you. If the other six council members feel like it's a high priority, it'll balance out.
Can you tell us where the riverfront bulkhead is? Is that by the harbor?
It is in front of the condos that are being built now, in the publicly owned section. There's a piece of the bulkhead that's allowing dirt to seep out through it that was not open and allowing that to happen when the whole thing was built. It needs to be injected, sealed, and then backfilled in where that doesn't continue to happen.
Jackie, on this Boxwood project, does it relate anyway to number 20, the Longfellow Acres Main Drainage?
It does not. There's another set of failing pipes that go in right at their entryway under and in and off to the west.
There happens a few sinkholes in that area too, right?
Mm-hmm. There's one in here for Oakhurst and there's another down further on Longfellow.
Why do the sinkholes occur? Is that because of the collapsed pipe?
The most common reasons are two. One is there was a lot of corrugated metal pipe put in 50 to 60 years ago. And 50 to 60 years is about how long it takes to rust and fail. The other one is if you have any pipe, whether it's plastic metal or otherwise, they're generally put in in either 20 or eight-foot joints, depending on the size of pipe, and that dirt moves, the joints start separating, and the dirt falls in.
I don't want to be a hater of this system, but I'm looking at projects that I have a clue. Yeah, I mean, it's just, yeah, I mean, a lot of them I'm familiar with, but I just don't know that I'm educated enough.
Okay. Well, let me offer this then.
I know names of complainants like Lisa King. That's a priority for me. Rhonda Clark.
That relates to project two. Rhonda Clark relates to number one. And I'm happy to answer those questions as you're filling them out. I'll walk around and answer any. If you do not know a project at all, maybe leave it off. But don't put any more than 30 As or 30 Bs as your highest priorities. I mean, to me, that's kind of fair. It will all add up.
And just to reiterate this, I get this miles on the board. So I know if that does work, it gives that very good objective snapshot. So whether or not we think at this point we're not sure, the system doesn't work.
And another thing to keep in mind, too, is if there's like something on here that maybe only one of you are even familiar with and the other six don't know it, so it gets a low priority, but it becomes a safety issue in three months, in my mind, it bumps up to the top regardless, if we're dealing with health or safety issues.
I'm looking at something that I see on the sheet where, in particular, drainage improvement, naturally, that should be an A, and also sinkholes.
I think you're going to find more than 30 of those.
That's what I'm saying. So what do you do?
You have to pick 30 of them on the top. We probably have money for three or four. That's the problem here. We're dealing with 120 projects and we probably have money for maybe six of these. Some of them are much smaller and we can get more in.
So just the top three are the priority that your office has. The rest is not, or does this go from one to...
No. I bumped those three to the top and some of the other on the front page are things that we've been dealing with for a long time. Those three, in my opinion, are the ones that can relieve the most safety in flooding, water issues, all collectively, with the biggest bang for the buck, I guess. I have, I would be hard pressed to only pick 30 as my top priorities. I would be hard.
I've been out there with you. I get it.
I would be very hard pressed. The problem is we just don't have money to fix 30 of them. So we have to figure out where to start and do something.
This doesn't, this doesn't, the paving, I want to just make sure that I'm clear, because we have a paving, we had a paving discussion a number of times, met with the Board of Supervisors. That has nothing to do with this list, correct?
Right. That's the other list that you have that Frank will be talking about in just a minute.
So I think, I think the council needs to know that as well, because we have a list, we went over priorities with the paving. So that has nothing to do with that, because one of the things that I'm really focused on, too, is paving a lot of streets. But, you know, I've been in and out of Bel Air Street with the residents over there. So that wouldn't be on this list.
Right. And as soon as we vote on this, then you're going to have another whole discussion specifically about paving. And I know Bel Air's on there. That's another packet.
All right. So, okay, so Frank's going to talk about this list. This is just the two and a half million. Well, that's going to go real quick from what I see.
So the top three projects, as we proposed on number one and number three, the budget that I'm proposing would do the construction as well. The number two, at this point, I'm proposing we finish design and acquire all the easements and continue to look for funding because we don't have enough to complete that one. The combined effort of those three will get us at about 1.1, 1.2 million. So the whole point of this is, okay, so what are your highest priorities moving after that for the next 1.3?
Jackie, go ahead. Matt, no, you go ahead.
This, who am I?
I'll put the numbers on there so we can all go to the same time.
Just skip past it. Seen some bulkhead in O'Bye-Chico. Where's that? Is that on, behind Bates Avenue?
That's the intent, yes. It's down off of Bates, south of Ingalls there.
Okay. On number four, that seems to be a pretty broad I and I reduction program in progress. And while certainly laudatory, I'm a little concerned about putting that as an A, because, you know, you could easily spend tens of millions of dollars to reduce I and I in the city. I mean, is there any more specificity you can give us?
Well, what I'm looking at, what I'm looking at honestly right now is, is this a high priority for this council? If it is, then the next step in this discussion is, okay, at what level? Are we talking about 50,000, 100,000, a million? At what level do you want to invest in that? If it's not one of your top 30 priorities, then we just continue to move on some others that are. And of course, any sewer work that we do is going to help with that problem. It's just not concentrated on it. So really, this right here, this effort is to find out collectively, is that a priority for you as a council?
Gosh, man, there's so many priorities.
Well, let me ask you this a different way, to make sure I'm including it. So when it floods, and I go through there by Lenny's, that's going to be the live oak Market Street drainage improvement.
Correct.
Okay. So when it floods on 14th Street, how many of these 14th Street projects are we talking about included in eliminating some of that?
Flooding on 14th Street, where you come down like through Paul Harvey and Taylor, that area.
Well, like products from Ingalls all the way to Convent, probably.
There's some intersections that are worse than others. Those are all at the, at the north, not north, upstream end of the East Lawn subdivision. So the combination of the East Lawn subdivision, which is number 15, and the 14th Street infrastructure, number 13, would attack that.
See, that's what I need to know. That's a good question.
So what about the, and we getting Briarwood, those problems, have we alleviated any of those drainage issues back there?
We haven't. We need to route it around that neighborhood. And so that one there is...
So that's the number three Briarwood. Trying to think of somewhere else that water really gets high. The Sherwood, I think it was Sherwood.
Sherwood, yes.
Sherwood is on here.
And also design fieldment course here, totally.
Sherwood drainage improvements, that's that area just south of the IG Levy area down through there.
Correct.
Okay. Who else is coming with, choose a side by?
Which one Sherwood? Uh-oh, Scott, which one?
Number 104.
And after you get after, like I said, after you get out that first couple, I really tried to shuffle these up so they weren't suggestive.
I remember the other one, Andrew Street.
Andrew Street did not make this list. It seems, that seems to be more of a maintenance.
Will the Chriswell McPhilla drainage pipe help that area?
A little bit.
So the lift stations, that's a lot. What is the cost of one lift station?
Depends on the size. There are some that are probably in the neighborhood of 60,000 to 75,000, some of the really small ones. And then there's some that are probably in the neighborhood of 700 to 800. I think there's two that are listed on here, well, three, I guess. The Victor Street Lift Station is one of the very small ones. The Moorhead Lift Station is on the smaller side. You're probably talking in the neighborhood of 150 to 200. You can get, and then the Ford Lift Station is not so much, a lift station is a forced main relocation because it pumps into a very shallow manhole. And I'd like to extend it to a deeper one that can accept the flow and not overflow.
So these, all these lift stations, is that a significant improvement to overall draining if you replaced these lift stations? How would that versus replacing, you know, the pipes and stuff?
Lift stations really will not help at all with reducing flow. The lift stations, basically, the ones that, the two that we're looking at are old, are failing, and it's essentially an end of a life thing, that they need to be upgraded and replaced to allow them to pump.
So what two of those?
Jackie, on number 59, you've got Martin, 42-inch storm drain pipe replacement. Is that all of Martin, north of Ingalls, south of Ingalls?
This is focusing on south of Ingalls.
Okay. All right.
How does, I'll fix and ask that same question on Martin, because Martin and Ingalls and endowed, and I guess Mercier has always been a problem. Did any of that major work we had done a year ago alleviate any of that?
From what we can tell, it's helped considerably. It's still very flat and low, but it is certainly, it is draining more and more quickly than it used to.
It still gets real high, though.
Mercier's always been a bad spot right there.
Yeah. Man, oh, man.
It's not easy.
Yeah. It's, I hate, hate to have to put one above the other.
Well, and that's, I mean, that's kind of the beauty of this process. If you really quickly pick your 30 favorite and then your next 30, it's going to shake out collectively. And like I said, that's not a hard and fast rule of what we're going to do. It just gives us a good blueprint to kind of start following.
So, as you know, I've been losing my mind over McPhilla, the graves underwater out there. Will this, the cemetery draining, drainage and improvements, would that alleviate?
That's the hope. The idea there is to spend some time really evaluating whether we need some detention ponds or reroute it and then to implement that.
And that's, that's that drainage on the backside of it, you know, where my dad's buried, where all that floods back there?
The whole idea here would be to really look at the thing as a whole, because the more we put in, can't think of the word, it's the little curbing that people put around plots and elevate plots as a full area, that pushes water somewhere else. And if we continue to elevate everywhere where there's plots that are being used, we continue to elevate all of that. If we don't mitigate that, we've already got houses and businesses immediately adjacent that are flooding and we're making that worse. So we're looking at a way to comprehensively evaluate it and mitigate it where we don't cause damage to anybody. We want to make it improved without just pushing it down the road.
Under, are you finished, Mayor? Under 110, Inner Harbor, Inner Harbor dredging, when was the last time, to your knowledge, that it was dredged?
The harbor itself was dredged post-Katrina. The channel out around the Point, I believe the county helped us with just recently. But the harbor itself, post-Katrina, was dredged to pre-Katrina limits only.
So we're talking six feet?
I don't remember.
Don't, I meant, okay.
I asked you a question about how we named it Market Street, even though I'm not familiar. I don't know if that's something that's still covered. Does that still flood right there?
Mm-hmm. Badly.
Is that on a list?
It is. Thought I remembered seeing that towards the front. It is number 60.
Okay. Oh, that's that one.
Yeah. It's labeled as Market and Live Oak, a block south, but that's, yeah, that's where that water goes.
I think that's a good one.
Which number was that, Jackie?
60.
60?
Okay.
On 99, Jackie, you have water main replacement, Delmas. Is that the street or the subdivision?
Street.
Because I've noticed, and I apologize for not sending pictures to you, I recently was on Delmas between Communi and Pascagoula Street. And a part of the brick pavers there have dramatically dropped in terms, and now, meaning that the concrete edge sits up three, maybe even four inches above the pavers. I mean, that, like, it's begging for someone to trip.
So that's at Delmas with Canty?
Canty, I'm sorry. Canty. Yes. It's on the north side. You got the sewing shop. You got the old McClellans where Heidelberg Steinberger is now. But that area right there has dropped a lot in just two years.
Okay. That's something that we can get property maintenance and the street folks to look at and see if they can reset that.
Okay.
When you talk about widening Ingalls Avenue to Market to Bel Air... When you talk about widening Ingalls Avenue to Market to Bel Air, um, explain that to me, please.
At least one of the councils put that in as a wish list item, and I included it. I don't recall who.
What number is that?
Thirty-nine.
Oh, I put that in there, just, that's kind of a wish list.
It's a good one.
So, Jackie, the two Hospital Road projects, both of those north of Ninety, are they not going to be included in the MDOT project that's widening there?
There's two, if I remember, one should be listed as a waterline extension and one as a drainage pipe?
Correct.
Okay, the waterline extension, um, from south of the railroad across Highway Ninety and tying in at the hospital, was originally included as part of the Phase Two project, and it had to be removed with the budget concerns that we had. That's one that we could pop in very easily as a separate project, and MDOT would not assist with that funding. The drainage project is north of Highway Ninety, up by, um, north of the pond, up by the, um, the dentist and the OB-GYN and everybody out there. There's a big pipe up there that needs to be replaced.
So, do you have any budgeting information on the one that's south of Ninety while we're doing that project?
Just the, the water line?
Yeah, I mean, is it fifty thousand or is it five hundred thousand?
It was, if I remember right, the water line part was about two hundred thousand that we took out of that project.
And how critical do you consider it? I mean, I hate that we're going to put a bunch of money and we're going to do all that and then...
Right, so the reason that that was pulled out as a separate one is because it involves permitting with Highway Ninety and the railroad, and because, basically, it's a bore. So, if we do it in six months or a year later, it could be a separate contractor, you're digging a hole on both sides of the road, putting a bore in and connecting it. So, it's, it's the least impacted by the actual road construction.
Does the Chicago and New York Avenue drainage improvements help all of those streets in that area, or just those two?
Again, this was one that was kind of put in as I got emails from everyone. So, there were some that were individual streets, some that were, um... The way that I would look at this feedback is if the whole neighborhood kind of gets the same rating, I would prefer to look at it as an entire Baltimore, New York. Do the entire neighborhood as one drainage improvement project? If we could fund it, if there's one street in there that's much worse than others, then maybe we prioritize that one above it. It sounds to me, from the feedback I'm getting, that everybody's kind of suffering the same.
Yeah, I'm the one that put that on there, talking about Chicago, New York, yeah. Because I've gotten a lot of complaints.
Right. Baltimore, Boston. And mainly over there in Boston, from what I'm understanding, it was a drainage at one point, but a lot of people came in there and they filled those spots in. They filled those drain spots in, made their yards a little longer or extended it, and that causes the clog, it's right there.
Sure.
You know more about that than me, so.
On eighty-four, Old Mobile Alleyway Sewer Replacement. Now, from Old Mobile Hospital, no, uh, yeah, Old Mobile Hospital Road, north south, Old Mobile, to Eden Street, uh, north and south. There's an alleyway there, which is always water sits, is that one of the...
Um, the water that's sitting up in that area, I'm kind of describing as number ninety-six, that Tupelo, Mountain Duncan, Eden drainage?
Oh, that's the same drainage?
That's the drainage that's north of this area you're talking about.
Right, because it's almost like the drain that it makes a circle. Because on the Hospital Road, right in front of the flower shop, there's a drain that goes north, that goes east and west. And then once you get, and then it turns and comes back south, then it goes back east again on Duncan. And then it's between Old Mobile Highway, Duncan, Eden Street, it's just, it's a circle.
And, and there's some city-owned property up in there and some easements and whatnot that need to be reclaimed and addressed, and that's what this, that project here is.
Okay, but is that going to take care of the drainage system that runs east, northwest, east, south, north, south, east, west?
I would anticipate this would collect various directions and get it out of there.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
But you do know what I'm talking about?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Jackie, where's Pelican Ditch?
Are you familiar with where Pelican is?
Trying to think. I can, I can pull it up. The Pelican Ditch, I'm not familiar with the Pelican Ditch. That's a good point. I don't even know where Pelican is. Why should be my ward?
The problem is I have this idea of, okay. Okay, so right here, Pelican, there's your Old Mobile and Orchard. Pelican is this one right over in here. And so, there's a ditch.
Oh, it's in Arlington, okay.
Across up through the back and out that way, and this area back here is roving and falling in the back where their fences are.
It's just in Arlington, it's right there. Yeah, I know.
What number was that?
I've got one more question. On Mantle, off of Ingalls Avenue, I think I brought that to Mr. Carter's attention. There's a bridge down there that's reported to me by some of the bus drivers.
The county already is in the middle, yeah, the county's already in the middle of designing and replacing that one.
That's the one between Parsley and Ingalls?
I think so.
That's a bad bridge.
That's, that's one of the four that the county's working on.
It's caving in on one side.
That's, that's one of the four that the county's working on that, that is very high priority.
Where are we on sinking the lights on Market Street? Is that a project that would be included in here, is that separate? I know one time we talked about potentially county funds paying for that.
For...
The lighting system on Market Street.
So... That's the safety project that Ryan's been working with GRPC on? Sinking SYNC, not SINK, trying to figure out how we were putting them in the ground.
Waiting on the funding back, if we were able to acquire that funding. So, we should get those there pretty soon, we just have to get on the notice sheet if we got one or not.
Because I get more complaints about that than anything else on this list, just about it.
For sure.
Jackie, explain to me the difference between retention ponds and detention ponds.
Hopefully, I'm going to get this correct. Retaining means you hold it forever, detaining means you slow it down. So, retention ponds would basically be ponds that the water gets in and eventually soaks into the ground. Detention ponds are kind of the way that IG Levy works, where it can go up about four feet and then it's metered out slowly. And so, it, and that's what most commercial developments have to incorporate now, is detention ponds, where they don't let water leave any slower than it used to.
Number twenty-four, the drainage improvements around Resurrection, is that on the Old V side or the Sacred Heart side?
Downtown.
It's right here, behind us.
No, it's outside, isn't it?
Go past City Hall and turn left, it's going to be down around in there. That's one that Scott's been calling in for several years and never focused its way up to the top. Oh, we're cheating over here, copying off each other.
What would a full traffic signal study evaluation entail, and how much does that cost?
When we first put together a proposal, I want to say it was in the neighborhood of seventy-five thousand. And it was, the idea was to go to every signal that we have in the city, evaluate them, compare them to warrants, figure out, are there any that are no longer necessary? Are there some that really need to be fine tuned as far as the timing goes? And overall, I think that scope is modified with things that have changed over time, so we'd have to get a new proposal and look at that. But when we first looked at it, it was in that neighborhood of seventy-five to a hundred thousand. This is not an easy job.
Do you want us to initiate or just leave it like it is?
It doesn't matter who they came from, I'm just adding up numbers.
So, once we finish with A, we go list thirty of the Bs?
The way that I would approach it is to pick my thirty most important, and then I would go through and pick thirty that I don't think are important and make those the Ds. And then that leaves you sixty in the middle to split between Bs and Cs.
We want to A, B, and C, and D?
Well, that worked for me.
So, a lot of stuff needs to be done. It'll all balance out. Are you finished?
You're talking about library building improvements. Last I heard, there was about four and a half million dollars worth of repairs.
We've got serious issues with the satellite, with the roof, windows, the walls, the air conditioning system, all are significant needs.
So, you got four and a half million for the library, and then you have five and a half, five point eight, I think it was, for the police department?
Probably.
That's about a ten million.
Add in some City Hall and some permitting and...
City Hall's a ten million dollar problem.
If, if we could ever pull off that one combined municipal complex, it would be a definite improvement.
Well, and, and you know, we talked about that originally, of course, timing's bad to do it when you, when we ran into the deficit. But, uh, we worked out of eight buildings, is that it, seven or eight buildings? And if you combine what it costs the city to work out of all those buildings, and insurance, light bills, you know, copy machine, internet?
Driving back and forth.
Driving, yeah. Versus just going ahead and bite the bullet building the new City Hall, we would be way, way, way money ahead, sir.
Where's the Bayou Chico bulkhead replacement?
Down there off of Bates area, south of Ingalls. There are several areas of bulkhead in there that are failing.
Come down there by the boat launch and all that stuff down through there?
Bates Road, Bates and Ingalls Avenue, which are...
Just as a side comment, one year that we did this effort, I've done this a few times. One year when we did this effort, we did it just like this with the council. We also did, um, department heads and assistants with staff. And then we did a separate effort with the Strategic Plan Steering Committee, did the exact same analysis, and then provided the council a comparison of those perspectives. And it was really kind of interesting to see which things were consistent and which things were different. I was going back through some notes the other day just to find the documents to start from, and it was, it was kind of neat to see how many things were really consistent across the board.
You good with just As and Bs?
However you want to do it, yes, sir.
Yeah, how do you put, well, you put, somebody write D on here, wipe it out. Because somebody asked for D, you'll be catching all kind of, for putting them on the back burner.
I think the interesting thing you'll get out of this, though, is that you will not even be able to fund all your As. This just puts them in a line. And, and really, what, a secondary benefit of this is it, it gives me a list that I understand how you guys feel, so that if I'm looking at something six months from now, I have some pipe left over and I've got a crew that's got two weeks of free time, I can look at this list and say, okay, project number seventeen and project forty-two both take the same amount of effort. I see them as being equal, but you guys picked seventeen. So, I go do that one first and then, and then move. So, it, it gives me some background information moving forward also. Not all of these will require massive amounts of capital investment. Some of them can be done if, if fit in, it's just there's a lot of them, so we can't get to all of them.
People on Facebook must be riveted. At the top of our heads while we fill out survey forms. At the top of our heads while we fill out survey forms.
Yeah. Totally disappointed.
So...
Where's Ford Avenue located?
There you go. Ford Avenue?
Yes, sir.
Um, you know where Pasco or Trent Lot is?
Right.
Okay, it runs right there, uh, if you're going south.
East and west?
Yeah, if you're going south on Pasco Gul, and you're coming up to Trent Lot. It's on your right and it goes back to...
Okay, okay.
So, so Trent Lot is right here.
Mm-hmm.
And then Ford Avenue comes across, and right where that bayou.
Okay, yeah. I kind of got it about there.
That, that ridge has been, um, closed off for a few years.
So, that's it.
Frankie, you gonna give us a set number of one, two, three, fours, and fives? I'm gonna get started if you are.
Actually, yes.
Can you tell us what those are?
One, two, three, four, five.
I know, but... You just want our top five?
Yes, yes. So, I want to, you know, I find it.
Uh-huh.
I'm sorry, it's hard to determine. How many times did I say it?
And some of these were on Becky's list, too.
The stuff that I had has more to do with the infrastructure drainage, not that it's just an overlay.
Did you say all As and Bs were this class?
If that's what you're up for.
That's what I'm up for.
Just the mayor still. Are you finished?
No, I'm not.
Okay, so just to reiterate, in case those at home are watching and have, have been wondering what in the world y'all were doing, as I told y'all last council meeting, one of the reasons why we did it this way was to get objective data. So, if y'all had time to read the list and see it and not ask questions before this, mostly you probably wouldn't know all the stuff that you got. You wouldn't be able to clarify with, with Ms. Jackie, for number one. Number two, um, you'd have had time, and having formally sat there, I understand how this works, you'd have time to call your colleague and said, hey, let's do this, number one, number two, whatever. And it wouldn't have been as objective as, as it should have been. So, that's why this was kind of hit on you tonight, the way it wa- it, it was, to make sure that it was objective. And it was individually ranked, so we all could tell from staff level what the council as a, as a whole prioritized, not just one or two people, if that makes sense. So, now on to the paving goes. So, we've got about one point nine million dollars in county paving fines that we have access to for this remaining budget year. Uh, as you'll see in front of you, those, um, streets have been highlighted. The ones that have estimates came from, um, the County Road Department. The ones that don't have estimates, those have been submitted by councils since, um, since that time or have been in conversation with staff since that time. One that's not on there, that should be on there, is Tupelo. If you will, add that at the bottom, uh, for, um, paving needs. We've exchanged a number of emails on that, but for some reason, they just didn't make the list on, on this printed version. But please add it, at, at the bottom. But as you'll see, there are five with estimates, um, previously asked from the county. The county does do these, these estimates. They do provide these to us. So, if y'all decide to do estimates or, or do work on, or paving work on streets that are not currently estimated, we'll get those back to you as, as well. But what I want you to do is take a second and look at, at, at these, rank the top five, one, two, three, four, and five. It's as simple as that. Um, and then whatever funds are left, after I get those estimates, if there are extra funds available, I'll come back to you and say, hey, we still have X number of dollars left based on, um, this sheet. And then we'll do this again at a, at a council meeting going forward. But right now, all I need is your top five.
You want our top five off this list? You don't want us to go three, two, and mark one, two, three, four, five?
No, just take, take, say, for example, if you have Bel Air Street, is that number one? Put number one. If you have Seaco, put that number two.
Okay.
Or just those, those streets are listed here.
Okay, I know stuff.
Just five, just five out of the entire list. So, just think about five of them and put one, two, three, four, or five next to five of them. And also attached are some maps.
You're about to get a bunch of them. We about to pave some roads.
So, attached are, are some maps in case you're curious where the streets are, so you, you have for, for reference points. But one point nine million, basically, if you do the ones that are highlighted, and also let's clarify, on Beach Boulevard, is, if you're not willing to pave it, I mean, if you want to just stripe it, that's gonna be, what Jackie, about thirty-five thousand, forty thousand for striping on Beach Boulevard? Say, so around, let's say fifty. So, if you want to just stripe Beach Boulevard versus just, instead of paving it, then just circle stripe and then make it a priority number. Um, but the rest of these are all about paving.
Actually, something concerning that, the payment, um...
Yes, sir.
Ingalls, the, 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 um, East Bank.
Yes, sir.
They are under construction. Are we gonna have a specific route, uh, generator route or they are gonna have...
The big trucks or the, or the employees?
Exactly. I was in behind four of those eighteen willows on Market Street yesterday.
Yes.
There wasn't no one yesterday. It was Friday, I believe, or... And I'm looking at, Market Street is already cracking.
Yes, sir. So, the, the main, the main corridor for all Ingalls traffic that we're encouraging their big trucks and their employees to use is Market Street.
That's what I'm saying. We gonna have a specific route, they just gonna be able to roam the city.
Well, we can't control everyone. We are telling Ingalls that we prefer them to go down Market to Ingalls. Yes.
So, we do have...
That's what we've told Ingalls. We, we, we prefer that, cause we don't want them getting on Pass School Street next to the schools and having clogged traffic there. Same with downtown corridors, there's just not enough space for them to come, come through. Plus, we don't have a, given the fact that it's four lane on Market versus those side streets, it's just, it's not practical to go through.
Well, I think, uh, Chico.
You need to pay them? Good thing, read that chicken scratch.
There you go.
Okay.
Said everybody?
Once you get Mr. Foreignettes, then I'd recommend a recess.
We will do it.
Okay, sir.
All right, so we'll take a, uh, five-minute recess. Everybody's in.